Yeah, no, but I had.
Daniel, then my niece came and stayed with him. Wanted to, because she had a little.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in every law, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks again for coming out. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Any changes, Dan?
I have none.
Do you have, Duane?
None.
Ryan?
None.
No? Okay, I've got a few. We're gonna add J3, modification of the Excel easement. Um, under old business, we're gonna revisit the tennis courts that we talked about last time. So that'd be G1. We're gonna replace the G1 that's in old business and move the resolution for the prepayment of those bonds that we talked about last time. That's just a formality up to the consent agenda. So we'll move G1 to the consent agenda, add the tennis courts under old business, and the modification of Excel easement under the engineer's report. Anything else, Tim?
No, I have nothing else.
Okay, interchange motion to approve has changed.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, the consent agenda with the one added addition. Any questions for administration on the consent agenda? Hearing none, thank you.
I'm moved to approve with the change.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, don't have any visitors tonight. Um, underneath the mayor's report, C1 there. Um, first item, voluntary contribution of the CASN fire relief. So this is, um, my recommendation to the council. Uh, the fire relief is gonna take some money from their fundraising and put it into their pension fund, which they're not required to do. The city's not required to do it either. But at some point in the future, if there's ever a shortage, the city is on the hook to make up that difference. So my thought was, as a council for this, this year, is that if they put in, they're gonna put in, I think, three thousand dollars, and that we would match that three thousand dollars, thinking ahead, because there's been times in the past, and there could be a time in the future, and based on market conditions, it's a good time to add. Um, it's just gonna possibly save some headache for future councils if all of a sudden they get a, if the formula gets out of whack, the council has to make up a sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollar difference. That's just a requirement. So just thinking ahead, if we can dribble this stuff in over the years, nothing that's set from year to year, but we can do that this time, I'd, I'd like to make that recommendation to do that.
Where would the three thousand from the city come from?
Um, from the liquor store funds.
Okay.
Yep. So it's not part of the levy or that, but we have those profits from the liquor store for a reason, so.
Mm-hmm.
And with, um, the budget for the remodeling liquor store coming in way less than what it could have, we have those funds there. I just think it's a good use of the funds long-term. So I'd like to make that recommendation, and I suppose I would need a motion to do that.
I'd make a motion with, to do that.
Thank you for the first and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, second thing under mayor's report, nothing on the agenda, but I just wanted to thank Nancy. Tonight's her last meeting after several years of service to the city, so I appreciate it. Thank you, and best of luck on all your cruises and playing bingo at the.
And family. Fortunately, I'm brought back in to help.
I know.
So.
And graciously coming back to help train the new person and be on call to, uh, get us through the transition. So we appreciate that and all your service.
No, thank you, and thank you for fifteen great years. It's, Cason's a great community, and it's great working with all of you too, so.
Thank you, Cindy, uh, Nancy.
We expect to see you back, maybe to help with the festival again.
Man, I was hoping to get out of that.
Me too.
Be called.
You're preaching the choir on that one.
It's a great community event, too.
Okay, thanks, Nancy. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Uh, don't have any cards, so, no public there. So, um, on to the first public hearing. The first one is the Small Cities Development Grant. You wanna talk about a little bit, just a little about that before we?
Sure. Um, so the city participates with SEMCRA, and, uh, Nick Coverman is the development director, and he indicated that, um, we needed to be doing a, a public hearing, uh, tonight. Uh, it's an opportunity for property owners to provide feedback on the original citizen participation plan and any substantial amendments to it. Um, so they provided a notice. It's included in your package. You do have information, um, regarding the affidavit of publication that went out to residents. So, um, what we're doing tonight, and you, you can see in the packet, kind of, he's got a pro forma sort of a standard document there where we'll open a public hearing. Uh, we'll have anyone who wants to have a comment period have an opportunity, and then the mayor will, will ask for feedback a couple of times, and then, um, if there are any questions or discussion from the, uh, the council, they can have that, and then we would close the public hearing, so.
Okay. Any questions on that before I call the public hearing? This one's pretty detailed, so I have to read this word for word, I guess, for legal reasons. I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing on Small Cities Development Program Citizens Participation Plan. The required second hearing is an opportunity for property owners to provide feedback on the original citizen participation plan adopted with the Small Cities Development Program Grant and any substantial amendments to it, or to the activities for which the SCDP funds are used.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed. Public hearing is now open at 6:06 PM. If anyone would like to come forward to speak for or against the item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. I would ask that comments are kept to five minutes. Thank you. Um, I'll call for the, anyone to come forward once. I have to call for anyone to come forward twice. This is ridiculous. Anyone else three times? I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing at 6:07 PM.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that all you need for that?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Coverman was supposed to be attending tonight, and it's like Linda's trying to get him electronically. I, I didn't think they were to be that bad. He thought they might be, so we did try to create an online meeting, but he wasn't able to attend, obviously. So, um, I think he wanted to discuss the project, the program, a little bit. We do have a number of participants, and you get those reports generally in the, uh, we have those in correspondence. We give kind of an indication of how many people are participating. I know there are a number of people in town. Those, uh, projects are typically, uh, you know, rehabs. And the way it works often is it's a forgivable loan, and it's based on a, kind of an income guideline. So the number of people that live in the household and the income, um, it allows people to, as long as they own the home, it's forgiven a certain percentage each year they own the home, and then at the end of a ten-year process, it's a hundred percent forgiven. So then they're able to sell the home without paying that back. If they do sell the home beforehand, they have to pay the remaining principal that's on the loan. So, um, anyways, relatively straightforward.
Okay, thank you. On to our second public hearing, regarding the Public Safety Building USDA Development Public Hearing. Um, this is for the payment amortization schedules that we discussed at the last meeting. So we have to have a public hearing to see if there's any input from the public. So I'll open the public meeting. Anyone has any comments or to share with us, please come forward, state your name and address. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so payment and amortization schedule, do we have to approve that?
No, we don't. This is just informational, so we're hoping to lock that interest rate in. Um, if, if we can get everything approved, I know that this has been a, kind of a slog document-wise. I think probably ninety percent of the documents the city has, uh, needs to finish or completed. Um, they're waiting on a couple of documents from the, uh, construction manager, and part of the issue is that USDA typically does a, uh, I think they call it design, build, and let kind of process, and I don't know, Mike, you can maybe speak better to that. We're looking at a construction manager basically at risk process where, uh, the contract will be held a little bit differently, so they're kind of getting through that. But, um, I think overall, you know, the, uh, the process is moving forward, and we're on track for our letting in, in late January, early February, I think, so, which we've talked about before, so.
Good. All right, thank you. All right, number, the third public hearing tonight is, uh, to enter the contract with ICS, Energy Efficiency and Operational Cost Reduction Project, the Cason Liquor Store. So I'd open that public hearing for anyone that has any comments regarding that project. If you come forward, state your name and address. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so everything is in the packet. The change was made.
That's right. So I do, Mike's here tonight, and so you've got a little updated version that was loaded up today. Um, so a question, yeah, come on up, Mike. Uh, one of the questions that came up at, I think, the last time we talked about it was the contingency line, and so, uh, Mike, you can talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
And then I think he's gonna go through kind of point, 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 line up each, you know, so each line item, and then he's kind of got a description of what the line item entails.
Okay.
In that packet.
I, uh.
Or give you an opportunity to kind of understand exactly what we're doing.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Uh, Mike Piper with ICS. Nice to see you all again. Um, I just remember, remind me, um, if you'd like, I do have a brief update on the previous public hearing, which is the USDA applications or applications that we're helping with. Um, would you like now or?
Why don't you do that first?
Okay, sure. Um, just, not much of an update, I apologize. Just, uh, we got some clarification on what the USDA is requiring us to change our front-end specification. Front-end specification is basically the project manual that we write that tells all the architects, engineers, and so forth, and subcontractors on the process that they have to follow. So it's basically the project manual, um, if you will. Um, they require certain specific things to be listed in that front-end specification, and that's what we write, and so our, our group is in the process of rewriting that. Um, so it's kind of a blend of effort between our team and, uh, your staff to be able to get that submitted, and that should be wrapped up here very, very soon. So, um, we were kind of a little bit late to the party on applying for the USDA grants, but, uh, just so you know, that's where that process is, and our team is well aware of it and working on it, so I wanted to give you that update. Um, if there's any questions or concerns, I will take that back to my team, so I wanted to, of course, ask that question here tonight. Other than, it will get done, and it seems like a pretty straightforward process. It's a form they provide. It's not like we have to write, you know, essays for a college application or anything like that. It's pretty much a, it's a USDA form, and we just gotta answer the, the questions correctly, so. Um, that was, uh, on your previous point on the agenda, so.
And we're within the timeframe to get that rate locked, right?
It appears so, yes. Yep, it seems so. Uh, but as far as their approval process and timeline, we don't have control of it, so we're just kind of, we're hoping, we're doing what we can to get everything done in time, so. Um, okay, uh, thank you very much for having me tonight. Uh, with respect to the, uh, Cason Liquor Store project, uh, if you all recall, uh, we decided to pursue utilizing the Energy Efficiency Projects Legislation within the state of Minnesota, which re, allows you to do a design-build approach with a guaranteed maximum price, which is what has been presented to you in your packet. Um, what that means is that we are on the hook and responsible as ICS for any risk or, or cost overruns that may occur. Uh, Tim did indicate to me when he socialized this with the, with the, uh, council, uh, must have been, I guess, last month, maybe it was two months ago. I apologize for not knowing that off the top of my head. Um, there were two kind of main things that were question marks. Um, I'll walk through the scope of work. Uh, just a bit of history. The original idea was, and I, I know some of you are aware of this, the liquor store idea was to hopefully try and put on a possible small expansion that would better serve the retail area of the liquor store, uh, and then remodel certain parts. That, that actually required a lot of extensive remodeling and redoing of the existing space. Um, and when we did budget that out, it came in, uh, well north of a million two, million three, and, uh, it was immediate reaction, uh, by staff to say that is not gonna work, and, um, we tend to agree, you know, with the size of the facility and the age of it, uh, really, it's not, it's not bad. Uh, it's, it's in decent shape. There are pieces of it that do need to be updated, so what we decided to do was take a step back, refocus on the facility, and just look at the components of the facility that are really at or nearing the end of their expected useful life, uh, which, as you can imagine, would be a mechanical and electrical lighting systems, and in a liquor store, of course, a major beer cooler that has a big refrigeration system that needs to be replaced. Uh, and lastly, the racking system, so I'm sure you've all been in there at some point, but, uh, if you are in there in the, uh, sorry, for lack of a better term, the beer cooler, the racking shelving system, it's called a gravity flow shelving system, it lets everything kind of slide towards the doors, is really rusted out and mold, and I don't want to say, I'm not saying the M-word. Um, it's, it's in rough shape, so that was the, basically, we're gonna renew the guts, if you will, for a lack of a better term, of the liquor store, so we're gonna replace the mechanical systems, um, the mechanical systems that serve the retail beer cooler, uh, the mechanical system, which is essentially a residential furnace. It's a little more complicated than that, that serves the HVAC purposes for the facility, uh, redo the lighting, and then essentially a small aesthetic component, uh, which is another point that was in question, which I will address in just a second. Um, in addition to that, there is a required re-roof that's being done. That's with, being done with your current contractor that services and maintains all of your existing roofs. Um, so they, it was actually really relatively easy for us to have them come in and, and review that and provide us the, the proper solution. Um, the, uh, I don't know if you've been in the other parts of it. Um, I mentioned the mechanical systems upgrade. The restroom that gets used frequently by the public, um, whether good or bad, um, is in quite rough shape, and so this would also include redoing and up, and installing, um, low-flow and high-efficient, uh, fixtures within the fit, within the bathroom itself, but also just redoing it to make it nice and clean again. Um, so that is the other portion of it, and then, uh, the two items that I wanted to address in this discussion that Tim had instructed me to was, one, there was, uh, the last line item on the project table is a project contingency, and in this type of a project, since it's a di, excuse me, since it's a design build with a guaranteed maximum price, meaning there is no risk of change orders to you, that we have to bear all that risk, uh, we like to carry an exposed contingency. In this case, it's not, not terribly large, uh, but, well, I guess with the size of the project. Um, previously, we had listed, and that's kind of how we always list it, just 'cause we're not sure how things are gonna go. Typically, we will share any unused funds in that exposed contingency with the owner and split them fifty-fifty. There was a question from Tim to say, we, that's our money, we, if we don't spend it, that should be ours, and I've spoken with our, uh, upper leadership, and that's no problem at all. So we've reflected, uh, refi, uh, revision in the contract so that any unused funds in that exposed contingency, uh, excuse me, that exposed contingency, um, will be returned to the owner. Um, so there is no sharing going on. So basically, if you don't spend the money, that is, that's the city's to keep. Um, and then, secondly, um, we had, uh, we had some very disguise, uh, defined scope of work for an addition and remodeling and putting in new sales items in the retail area, and there was a lot of stuff, uh, for like re-cladding the outside of the facility with some stone, adding new windows, new entrance, and that's unfortunately what drove the cost to the, the point where it was, uh, cost prohibitive according to the city. Um, so when we revisited that, um, the idea was that, look, we're doing all kinds of things that are gonna kind of renew the lease on life for this facility. We're getting, basically, as I said, redoing the guts of the facility, the things that are the moving pieces that are gonna have to, uh, essentially be replaced anyway. Um, however, there are still some needs in the retail area, like carpet replacement. There's some roof, uh, not roofing, uh, flooring issues that need to be addressed. Uh, if there's a need or a want to do things that could improve the aesthetic equality or quality within the liquor store, such as a coat of paint, uh, that was also in there. So that's what's in this budget here. Uh, that is also kind of being treated like the, uh, exposed contingency, meaning what ICS will do is we will manage that. There's been a request from staff to make sure that we try and get quotes from local contractors to do that type of work. For example, there's some small shelving items that need to be replaced, carpet replacement that needs to be done, painting that needs to be done on the inside. Um, we, we have not gotten quotes for that. We know that this is a very comfortable budget for that. Uh, ICS will mark it up. It's in the contract. We will mark it up to manage that project, a maximum of fifteen percent, but we will work with the staff to make sure that, you know, if it's something that doesn't require any kind of management other than some paper pushing, we can obviously reduce that. Um, but that's in the contract and enabled for staff to manage, but that's what that line item is, is really to do more small cosmetic and beautification of the inside of the retail environment within the liquor store. Um, I'm sorry, the last thing I did not mention, uh, was exterior painting. So we did look at re-cladding the entire exterior of the building, and it was way too expensive, and so, uh, what we've done is done a little bit of research and figured out, and I'm, I'm a little nervous always when we talk about painting exteriors of facilities that have metal siding. Um, what we're going to do is, we found a solution, we believe, where we're gonna be able to treat that, wash it completely, and put on a new paint that does have an extended warranty. I don't have clear definition on what that is. Um, my understanding is that it's a minimum of five-year warranty, but it will essentially re-beautify the outside of the facility as well, and also prevent you from making additional repairs or anything from rusting or anything like that on the facility. Um, so, to close, um, this is a, uh, project that we are pursuing under the Energy Efficiency Projects Legislation. There are energy effi, actually, it fits better now that we're not doing the addition, frankly, uh, 'cause we are just replacing the guts of the facility. Energy savings are contributing to the, to the savings that can be allocated to the cost of the project. Um, but as, uh, you, we've discussed before, um, we recognize long-term operating savings, which is an allowable part of savings in the Minnesota legislation, to be able to do the project under this format, uh, in which case we can, uh, select which subcontractors actually implement the work. So, um, what you see are the exhibits that are associated, uh, with the contract. Uh, nothing has changed other than the two things that I've mentioned, with the contingency all being returned to the city. Um, as, well, I guess that was it. So, um, that's it. So, I'm here to answer any questions, but, um, we're ready to roll, and, Tim, I think I mentioned this to you. Um, Kathy's slightly concerned about logistics and scheduling this thing, 'cause obviously if we're redoing the guts of a beer cooler, that reduces her inventory. What are we gonna do with that? We can't put it in a parking lot and put it in a trailer, because even that requires a permit, so, um, we are working through that.
Right word, Mike.
What's that?
With Kathy, slightly, it might not be the right word, but.
I don't know what I said wrong.
I'm wrong.
Sorry, I'll take education. Um, but, uh, at any rate, uh, the good news is, uh, we have talked, and the, the biggest piece we're concerned about is actually the, the refrigeration, the, the low-tem refrigeration in the beer cooler, because that's the part that's gonna drive whether or not you have retail sales available. Um, and they have indicated that stuff is available, especially the racking, uh, is, the racking systems will be available hopefully sometime in January. I can't guarantee that, but all I, uh, am relaying to you is that things do seem to be available for the very critical components of this project, uh, within the next four to six weeks, and, which is what Kathy indicated is her slow time, uh, so probably more ideal to get it done sooner rather than later with that piece of the project. And so that was just another component that I thought I'd mentioned. Um, and that's it. So, um, any questions, I'm more than happy to answer, otherwise, uh, that's what we have to present to you. And thanks again, and appreciate your confidence, Nancy.
I do have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
On your line item six, where you said your, the contingency of the hundred thousand for the remodel, it doesn't say in here that you'll give back if we don't spend it all. Would that be added? I see you got it on line item eight.
Yes, no, I'm sorry. It's just not 'cause it's under, listed under contingency. That's additional supported work, so, um, yeah, honestly, we can go back and add that. That's an error on my part, because essentially, that is your allowance, and if that's not spent, that's all returned to you, of course.
It just, it's nice that it's written out.
Yeah, we, and we can, we can modify that. Of course, you're not signing a contract tonight, so we'd be happy to do that. And, but thank you for the clarification and the question. You are correct.
I just have one, and it's ignorance question out of anything.
On the phone.
Under, um, exhibit C, scope of work, where it talks about the things that are excluded from scope of work, and I understand why they are excluded. Are they excluded from being done or from the cost?
Just from the cost. We will still manage it, of course, but I, I don't anticipate running into anything. There was a question whether or not there was asbestos underneath the tiles or the ceilings in that facility. I don't believe that's the case. We did have a preliminary review, and the indication is that there's none. Um, but if there is that needs to be removed, that would be, that would be borne by the cost of the city just for legal reasons. We can't take it on.
Sure, understandable.
Yep.
Doesn't go in garbage bag.
But great, very good question, though. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You answered my questions with the change that you made, and then when's it gonna start? So four to six weeks is your hope to, for completion?
Yes, sir. Honored to be perfectly honest with you. What we're hoping is that we can actually receive a signed contract, so we can turn around and, and assign our subcontracts right away, so that people can get things on order, and we can hopefully start actually implementing the work even before the start of February is, is our hope. I, I can't guarantee that, but that's our, that's our game plan.
Well, I mean, one thing to keep in mind, I mean, it's not gonna be done in four to six weeks.
No, but start.
That's what I mean, we get started, yes, right.
Like, this may be one of those ones where, you know, we get the coolers done first, and then, you know, weather cooperating, we'll, or get the paint done, and, you know, flooring happens when it happens, and.
Right.
The nice thing is, we wanna try and keep the, the liquor store open. So, you know, there was two kind of models. It was either somewhat piecemeal it, which is also based on the logistical part of it, or we could close it for a month and say, yep, we're just gonna slam it in there. Well, that doesn't really work staffing-wise, you know what I mean?
Right.
Yep. Part timers that we're gonna lose.
No, but it's gonna start as soon as we can get started.
Exactly. Hopefully, early in the new year.
Yep.
Essentially, and, and I, the way I'm looking at it, honestly, is that we're gonna have people here so frequently moving forward, especially with, uh, with regard to the fire station project, that, uh, we're gonna have a little more flexibility in this project, considering that's a little bit smaller and it's a renovation or a retrofit to an existing facility. Um, and I know it seems like a lot, I'm not belittling the co, belittling the cost of the project by any stretch, but honestly, uh, this is distinctly for different trades, and each of their scopes of work aren't that massive to begin with, so managing each of those individual subcontractors is gonna be a little bit of a challenge, just with the logistics of having a retail store that's open. Uh, however, from a general construction project standpoint, managing the subcontractors shouldn't really be all that difficult. We should be able to get them in and out pretty quick. So, um, I think, honestly, we've kind of arrived at the right solution here rather than what we were looking at earlier.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
We already did, and then close it, didn't we?
Yeah, the liquor store.
Yeah, the open and closed.
Liquor store, yeah.
In a motion to move forward with the project.
Okay.
Any last thing?
All right. All right, so any other conversation, comments, questions on that project? I'd make the motion to move forward with the changes that we approved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to our fourth, under public hearing, 2023 budget and levy.
Okay, yep, okay, so, um, tonight is the hearing for the, um, proposed final levy, collectible 2023 is along with the 2023 budget. Staff, as well as council, have been working on this since July with the, um, preliminary budget and levy approved in September. So here we are, um, with what's being proposed for, um, 2023. And I only take a few minutes, this is one of my shuttle presentations, um, to just review some of the factors that go into this. Now, we are always open to answer any questions that any of you may have. If you have specific line item questions or anything like that, please reach out to city. So we're looking at the overall levy and whatnot tonight. So we've got staff who can help you now and any time throughout the year, so feel free to call with any questions. Oh, yeah, pass those, I gotta pass those out. Um, so, generally speaking, we talk about the budget. The budget's made up of the general fund and then the enterprise funds. It's the general fund side that is the tax levy. So enterprise funds are things like the water department, sewer department, electric fund, the liquor fund. The fees or base rates, um, charges for those funds need to provide that those funds are self-sustaining. It relies on no tax subsidy. If anything at all, we have some transfers that maybe go from those funds into the general fund. For example, the electric department, um, we, we transfer some funds every year for the electricity related to the street lighting and things like that. Um, not necessarily a large amount, but, um, it can't go the other way. We rely on no taxes for those enterprise funds, but those are the factors that make up some of those. Um, what affects the property tax value that our, our residents and business owners see? It, it's a lot of factors, not just what the city needs to operate. It includes county taxes, school taxes, as well as city taxes, but a predominant factor is any changes in market value. That's under, uh, the auspices of the county. If anyone has any questions as to the valuation tonight, we don't address that. You need to take that to the county. Tonight, we're talking strictly about the budget as well as the tax levy. Um, and then, um, the second item there is change of property class rates. That's determined by whatever the state sets, and there really hasn't been many changes in a long time. Uh, there might be other factors related to the state, when any supplement that they give us, they, we, they, uh, we get about one point two million a year in local government aid, which helps, um, support the operations of the city, and then health and safety, other programs, and the impact of inflation. Just summarizing, um, what some of the increases are. You can see on the enterprise side, um, a few fluctuations, and sometimes they're related to repairs and maintenance, other supply issues that ebb and flow. Um, on the city side, we can see that that total budget, and on the city side, it also includes two, uh, special revenue funds, the library and the EDA, but it's funded, um, by fees, transfers, local government aid, and the tax levy, and then the tax levy also covers the debt service that we have for, um, the street portions of any projects that we have or public safety buildings. Generally speaking, built into the budget, uh, was a, um, three percent wage adjustment largely driven by the union contracts that we have, and then we have great, or steps, excuse me, of three point two percent, and then the estimates of what some of those cost increases were for insurance, and then the proposed utility rate increases for 2023. This is just the history of the, um, levy increases over many years. On average, about six percent or just less than six percent. We like to compare our local government aid to other communities as well as, um, calculate it on a per capita basis. Again, this is what the state sends to us to supplement the city operations. And we have, we have some examples at the end. The, with, with tax statements, you can't see them very well, but, um, a lo, a lot of individuals have large valuation increases, which more than offset what they might have received in the city tax increase. But what I wanna focus on here, um, as just my last general comment, and then you can open it up to what the public, and what you wanna up to what the public, what you want to hear from the public, and then move into the actual motions. But this is a comparison of, for example, so the first column in numbers is from 2022, and note that the third line down, the tax rate is 69.537. If you slide over a few columns, all these estimates are for 2023, but property in Cassin, comparing $150,000 home with either a 2% or 4% increase, a $250,000 home with a 2% or 4% increase, and then a $375,000 home. Over the years, we kind of pegged what we're looking at to the $250,000 home. But if you look at what the property taxes are for that $250,000 home, whether it's a 2% increase or a 4% increase, you'll see that if the valuation on a property did not change, and it was a $250,000 house, the city tax actually decreased, and then the tax rate also decreased down to the 57% or 59%. So the really great news is tax rate is dropping. The valuation increases ultimately the benefit of the homeowner at such time that they should sell. But the tax rate did increase. And how does that happen? That's because the piece, the pie also got bigger. You know, as we add more homes or more commercial to the city, the split of what the city asks for in the way of taxes has that potential to decrease the amount of tax, as well as the tax rate for the individual property owners. Any questions on that? Did I go too fast? I was kind of flipping through, but.
Good. Well, I think that, thanks Nancy. I mean, that's really the story this year, is that our tax rate's dropping by 10%. So, I mean, that's something exciting that we've been working forward toward trying dropping that rate. Some cities, they choose just to keep it flat, they want to capture that, but we're looking at a 10% drop in that tax rate this year. So we're excited about that.
Perfect. Thanks Nancy.
Okay.
Any questions for council, for Nancy, before we open up public hearing at all? Okay, I'll open up public hearing if anyone has any comments on the levy and budget for 2023. You can open and state your name and address, and share your comments. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. And thanks again Nancy for whittling that down and taking the challenge in September of a lower preliminary budget, and I'm glad it worked out, so.
I think we had some good input from council and mayor.
I think everybody worked hard, all the department heads worked hard. And part of it was working in our favor was the pie got bigger, right? So the whole pie got bigger because we added 50 some homes, plus some commercial and industrial, and we had the levy increase of around, what, 4%, 3.9 something, whatever, as far as dollar per dollar year over year.
Yep, dollar per dollar.
And that included the addition for the fire hall. And if you had a valuation increase of 5% or 10% on your property, your city portion of your taxes still went down. So, because the pie got bigger. So, I think it was a good year to do that. We got a lot of things done. Department heads, staff, Nancy worked hard to do that, and I appreciate that. I think the council appreciate, and I think the taxpayers should appreciate it as well. So, good work. We were able to do that. You can see the inflation, you know, wages are 5%, steps are 3.25%, other inflation went up, you know, health insurance went up 9%, 10%, 19%, whatever it was. And we were able to do that, and add the fire hall amount to it that the people voted for. And we didn't cut any services, we only raised the levy 4%. So, the council for the direction on that and doing that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2023.
You need to approve the resolution first.
Oh.
Sorry.
For the levy collectible in '23. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the 2022 levy collectible in 2023.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2023 budget. Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We are all out of public hearings to have. So, on to committee report, conditional use permit resolution for electronic sign at Cassin State Theater. Ian, you're up.
All right. So, this application for conditional use permit is for electronic sign for the Cassin State Theater downtown Cassin. The electronic sign itself consists of a message board type sign and some lettering above it. This is one of many improvements that are in the works for the theater and all the renovations that they've been doing over the past several months. But there was a public hearing conducted on Monday night with the planning commission, and then after that meeting, they did make a positive recommendation for council tonight. There were three questions that came up after that meeting, which I reached out to the property owner and the applicant to get answered in preparation for tonight. There were questions regarding if the sign was able to play sounds or not, and the answer to that is no, it doesn't play any sounds. There's a question if the sign is capable of playing like trailers or movie previews or anything like that, and the answer to that is no, it can play just like short clips or animations, but mostly it'll just be static images. And then finally, the third question was what would happen to the old lettering from the previous sign? And the answer to that was that he would keep it, he's planning to keep it and use it perhaps on the inside of the building or on the west wall. That's just brainstorming at this point. So, with that, the resolution for your consideration tonight includes some findings of fact, that the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan of the city. The use will not cause traffic hazards, and the traffic generated by the proposed use can be safely accommodated on existing or planned street systems, and the existing public roads providing access to the site will not need to be upgraded or improved by the city in order to handle additional traffic generated by the use. The proposed use will not impede the normal and orderly development or maintenance of the surrounding property. The proposed use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood, will not significantly diminish or impair the values of the property, and finally, that the use will not disrupt the character of the neighborhood. And with that, there were five conditions that are being recommended tonight. That the sign shall not exceed 100 square feet in area. The sign shall not exceed a height of 20 feet above the mean centerline street grade. The sign shall not be less than 10 feet above the sidewalk. The sign shall not project into the right of way more than five feet as measured from the point of the sign or its supports at the distance farthest from the property line. And finally, the sign shall be turned off not later than one hour after the last show ends, or 11:00 PM, whichever is later. So if there are any questions, I will take them now.
Okay. Any questions for Ian? No? You did a good job. All right. Any discussion from council?
I have it open, so.
Pretty straightforward. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Thanks Mel. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Ian, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Onto old business tennis courts that we discussed, I believe at the last meeting or the meeting before, and Tim's got some information back on that.
Yeah, so on the screen here, you can see the cost estimate, and that was right around 121,000. So the, at the previous meeting, the council had said, you know, we want to look at the budget. So the mayor and I and Nancy had a chance to sit down, look at our budget on the performance this year, and I think he's got a recommendation tonight to move forward with it using some liquor store dollars. Now that we have a locked-in number, we know what the number is going to be for that remodel, for the upgrades there. That would enable us to move forward with this. I know the parking and rec board had already made a positive recommendation to move forward. I guess the way they look at it, and kind of how I look at it, is we've already had two seasons where we haven't utilized those courts. So, you know, we have a choice. Either we rehab them, which I think this is the most cost-effective way to do that, or we tear them out, because they're not able to be used right now. I know different things were kicked around, you know, upgrading to a larger size complex. Without the schools' participation, you know, having a tennis program, it's hard for us to justify that, just for residential use. My thought would be, you know, at this time, we upgrade our facility in this way, so it's usable if something develops in the future, where Cassin Manorville decides to move forward with that. I think the parking rec board would be glad to look at participating with that project, or possibly even the ventures program would look at participating in that, as is what happened in the past. So, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I'm hopefully not mistating our conversation, but I think that was, the company that we've gotten the quotes from is asking, you know, if they'd like to schedule their projects going into the new year. You know, it takes a certain amount of time for them to get these materials produced, and also to kind of budget it in for their workforce. So, that's why I wanted to bring it up again tonight, and just get either an up or down on it.
No, and that's exactly right. And the use of the funds, now that we know, we've been reserving more funds in the liquor store for the last 10 years, because we knew this remodel or the life of the building was going to be gone. So, I think it's a good use for public and the park department, and it's multi-use. It's not just tennis, there'll be marked for what?
Pickleball as well.
Three pickleball courts?
Well, there'll be a pickleball court on each side of this. So it'll actually be six pickleball courts.
Six pickleball courts.
Potentially. But that's something that maybe, we may talk about a little bit at the, at the park board one more time to make sure, you know. But, yeah, we'll have multiple pickleball, four to six pickleball courts, depending on how they'll exactly fit, so.
Okay. So that's my recommendation, is that the funds to do it would come out of the liquor store funds. So, and then I think we should start doing something with, liquor store paid for the shelves at the library, I believe. I think there was an $80,000 transfer back when the library was done, and Joe Alonso here at the cabinet place made all the cabinets, so we purchased those locally. I think we should have something at the pickleball courts, you know, the courts brought to you by the profits from the Cassin Municipal Liquor Store. So people see where those profits are going. Just good advertising there. So that's my recommendation to the council, and I'd entertain a motion, yea or nay.
I'd make the motion that we move forward with taking the money from the liquor store fund for this project.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Administrator's report.
All right, let me close this one out here. Let me get to the engineers' report, just so you know that modification of easements up here on the screen as well. So, into my report here, we've got a number of items. You mentioned it already, Mr. Mayor, but just a big thank you to Nancy. She's been doing a lot of work this week with our new staff people coming in. We have a lot of turnover. The last month has been a big change. We've got department heads scheduled for next week, and it'll be interesting, you know, kind of having three or four new people on that group from one month to another. But, so we've had a little bit of that, and I anticipate that the learning curve will be pretty steep, but I'll be working with Jessica on the projects and things we have ongoing. First thing, of course, for her is the audit. So, just go through a few things. I know the city engineer has been working hard and gotten the draft, I and I recommendations for our review. We've done that at a staff level. On the 21st, we'll be looking at that in depth with the council. And directly following that, I'm expecting to have a rate study presentation for the sewer fund. So, the goal is to try and line those two up. So basically, you know, here are the projects, and, you know, here's the costing and how it's going to be paid for over the next, you know, five to 10 years. Let's see here. Something we were going to talk about tonight, but it's being pushed back January, was a tax abatement. You might be aware of that, that Dollar Store project. The EDA has made a positive recommendation, but it'll require a public hearing. So with the publication timelines, we move that back to the 11th of January. Additionally, we have 2023 street projects that I've kind of got listed out there. The total cost option there is just over $1 million. Hopefully it'll come in lower, but it'll a lot depend on the vituinous prices that we see in the spring. We are looking at that as an assessment project, so the city engineer is drafting those assessment, preliminary assessment rolls. A couple of people have asked us about the elected leaders, either foundational program. I know I talked to Paul on Monday about that, and then I know that Ryan's asked me about the advanced academy as well. So, those dates are in there. If you're interested, let us know. As soon as possible, we can get you signed up, and the city council has budgeted money for that for next year as well. Let's see here, budgets. And then, I have a attachment in your packet. It's a Safe and Sure Water Repair Coverage. So this is something that the Public Works Department, and I have sort of been kicking around a little bit over the last six months, sort of studying to see how it kind of works. We get residents that come to the city, and they have a service line issue. And what ends up happening is the service line belongs to the resident. You know, we pay for the water main, we pay for that. But if there's a service line issue, it can sometimes be expensive, between $8,000 and $10,000 to replace that, especially in an older home that may have a, it may just have a pipe that's 50 years old that needs to be replaced. So this is a program that Rochester currently has. And like I said, including your package, you've got some information on how that works. So I'm not looking for any kind of approval or anything like that tonight. But what we would be looking for, possibly in the new year, is implementing something along these lines, where we would automatically enroll customers in a, basically in an insurance program, where there's, you know, I think Rochester, it's $2 a customer or something like that, where we charge them on their monthly bill, but then they don't have to worry about that line. You know, the city would actually be the one that would take care of that line. We would, they would call us, we would contact someone for them, and we would deal with that. I think we figured it out. It's like 400 years worth of time, you know, if you're paying that insurance versus having to pay for that, you know, service line to be replaced all at once. Especially for some of our senior residents, we feel like it might be a good option to try to protect them. There is an opt-out. So we would automatically opt people in, but then you would be able to opt out of the program if you didn't want to participate. But just getting this in your hands, so you can kind of take a look at it. And we would do it for both water and electric lines. That would allow us to, you know, once again, replace those lines and not have to have folks worried about having extreme expense. So, we feel like it might be a good option. It seems like it's gone well over in the Rochester metro. So, if you have any questions about that, please let me know. I'll be bringing it back to kind of get feedback from the council, you know, probably one of our meetings in January. But we do think it might be a good option to utilize. So, I think those are all the things I've got under my report tonight.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Tim?
Does Rochester have anything similar for liquor sidewalks, too?
No, what Rochester does is they assess the homeowners typically for those. So, it's a little bit different model. I mean, you may have read in the Post Bolton, or seen it on the local news, this year they did do a lot of replacements. And maybe Brandon, you can speak to this too. But my understanding is that, you know, they'll go through and they're replacing, and they basically send you a letter and say, you know, here's your charge. And, you know, that's just kind of how it is in a lot of bigger metros, to be honest with you. Same thing with some trees, too.
Yeah, if you'd like, I'd add to that a little bit. That's actually shifting a little bit in Rochester. So currently, they go out, they have certain sections of the town, evaluate the sidewalks, and give the homeowner a chance to replace a sidewalk.
Sure.
And if they don't, then they have their large construction project, where they go in and ultimately special assess it, and the city does the project. I believe they've just changed, or in the process of changing that, from a direct assessment, if your house is affected, to more of a neighborhood basis. And then they have a sidewalk district where everybody is assessed when the project comes to that area. So then everybody gets assessed, and then they do it by area. As part of their ADA transition plan that the city also approved on those a few years ago, that says we're going to allocate a certain amount of funds, there says that they're going to go through every neighborhood at a certain timeline, which we're starting to see more common. We don't see a lot of other communities assessing them by a basis, because our community is probably about the size of a community that's broken out in Rochester. But they do have, or they're going to, or already have in place more of a sidewalk or neighborhood sidewalk areas that they're assessing as.
Well, I mean, I've seen it before, the special districts, some in the metro with like downtowns. You know, there are some cities in the metro, like Bloomington or Eagan, for example, that they create a special downtown district. In that downtown district, they do snow removal, they do sidewalk replacement, and it's just by assessment.
And Rochester also has one, too.
And, yeah, in Rochester, you know, they're doing something, too. So, but, yeah, in answer to your question, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Tim?
Thanks, Tim.
You bet.
Engineers' report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. As Tim touched on, we've got a couple of projects here tonight. Before I jump into them, he did mention the I and I project, so we are planning a presentation, and, you know, a short one of our summary of what we found. So we'll be looking for that at next meeting. So, with that said, the first item here is the 2023 street improvement project. In your council packet is the feasibility report. This is kind of pretty simple from an engineering perspective, but we are looking at special assessments, so we do put together a more formal report here. This should look familiar. We've done this for the 57 project, third, fourth, and fifth, and whatnot, for those projects that we also special assess. So, in the back of the packet is a map. You can see the areas there, some areas in Second Street southwest, Fourth Avenue northeast, a couple of locations there, Sixth Street Court, which is off Fourth Avenue, and then Sixth Avenue and Eighth Avenue. So ultimately, the streets that we're looking at. Why we're looking at them? Really, the streets are in poor shape. The utilities, ultimately, we say, we're not going to get there within, you know, 20, 30 years, that we're pretty confident utilities. But the roads are in pretty rough shape. So we're looking at ultimately reclaiming and repaving those streets. We're going and grinding the asphalt up, pull out some of that asphalt and repave it, spot repairs for some of the curb and gutters. So that is ultimately the situation we're in, and why we're looking at this project. So that's the existing conditions. I mentioned the proposed construction. Again, not a lot of utility work. Those areas haven't necessarily flooded a lot in the past. We haven't had a lot of water main breaks, our sewer is in, we'll talk about it next week, and, yeah, next week at the council meeting, in pretty decent shape. So it's more of just a pavement project. So, that's what we're looking at doing. I'm on page five already here, street right of way and easements. So, it's existing right of ways, so we kind of have everything in place. We don't need any right of ways or any special easements for the project. We're picking a cost. Again, the budget number that we've been working at at a staff level was $1 million. So I met with Public Works and said, all right, Tim's given us $1 million as a project, as a guideline to bring to the council, so what is our streets in the most need? So this is the streets that ultimately myself and Public Works worked through. Your special assessment policy does state that 30% of the total roadway reconstruction be assessed to benefiting property owners. So we took that and assessed that, or ultimately proposed in the feasibility report assessment of 30%, asking set number of about 306,000. Again, these are very preliminary numbers. We'll come back after we bid the project, based on our project schedule that's here in a bit. We'll come back after we have hard costs and look at reevaluating the cost assessment. We've done that for every project that we've done in the past history since I've been here. So, on that, ultimately, we are looking at an REU situation, which we should look familiar. We did that with 57 and third, fourth, and fifth. So if we have 120 REU residential equivalent unit, ends up with $2,500 per lot. So we're jumping on. Uh, so we're jumping on, onto the schedule. As we know from special assessments, this is administratively heavy kind of schedule, we get a lot of hearings and whatnot. Um, so we're here on December fourteenth. Um, in your resolution that you're going to consider hearing a bit is ultimately to hold a public hearing on January eleventh. And then at that same meeting, we would order the improvement, uh, looking at preparing some plans. And then I actually have the plans done from, again, from an engineering standpoint, the plans are pretty simple in January. Um, and then we, we'd be going for bids in February, have those bids back to the council at the February meeting. And then ultimately, set the amount to be assessed, uh, that can change. And then have the meeting in March where we'd have the final assessment hearing and then considering awarding the project at that meeting in March. Uh, then we would start construction in the spring with it wrapped up in the fall. Probably leave the schedule pretty wide open for a paving contractor, so it's more attractive to them um to ultimately come and do the project. So, that's the report. In the appendix, uh, there's a couple of maps that are showing the area. Again, kind of different parts of town and again, it's, it's based on our, our pavement needs and the, the most uh attractive project with respect to Public Works and where, where our pavement situation's at. And ultimately not uh putting nice pavement on where worse utilities are, so we want to be lining up some of those projects. Uh, for example, southwest Rochester is part of our bonding builder request that we're going to uh be looking at putting in here. Uh, that project's kind of off limits for pavement preservation utility work because we want to do it all together. Uh, so these areas are not those locations where we're pretty confident in utilities. Um, and then we have a cost opinion there, uh, lays out the cost and the REUs. And then finally, we do have a preliminary assessment role. Uh, we don't technically need to have this completed at this point, but I like to have it because we already know on our end. So, um, those are the properties that are ultimately benefiting from the project. And you can see the number of REUs there on the corners, where you'll see a lot of halves, thinking that uh, if the property owns only affected on one corner, it's a half of an REU. Thinking that the, the property would likely be assessed uh as part of the next corner of a future project. Uh, and then we do have some that are more than one REU. Uh, because we generally say a house is a house, a house, unless you own, you know, four house whiffs or frontage, then maybe it's a three. Um, so we look at that and ultimately have recommended an REU. Uh, that's something we can talk about at the assessment hearing, uh, once we kind of get some numbers and ultimately hone in on those numbers. So, uh, after we have the project bid. Uh, so that's the REUs, that ultimately breaks down about the twenty-five hundred dollars per REU. Um, so with there, I will pause, ask any, answer any questions you may have. And there's a resolution to approve this feasibility report and call that public hearing at your January?
Eleventh.
Eleventh meeting.
Any questions for Brandon?
Thanks for putting that together. I've been trying to get bigger projects done on a regular basis to just keep up the streets because we got some streets that are in pretty poor repair.
Yep, we've done, I think we've done a really good job, crack ceiling, chip ceiling, we did that a few years, we were really heavy on that. You know, we got Sixteenth Street, Main Street to preserve that pavement. And really now we're starting to chunk out, some of these roads are all alligator cracked, we end up plowing them into people's yards. So I think it's a good project to kind of catch some of those up to where we've been on the pavement preservation side.
I agree. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the feasibility report and calling for the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three street improvements for the January eleventh meeting. So moved. Thanks Ryan, do I have a second? Thanks Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number two.
Alright, uh, second item, seven, or Highway fifty-seven and Sixteenth Street roundabout, uh, in your council packet, long strip map. It should look familiar. Um, the council actually approved it, I think, some months ago. Um, I wanted to put it ultimately in the council packet again because we're going to talk about some right of way here. Um, and I think some of the driveway entrances in the QuickTrip change, so I'm just presenting it, that's been approved by the state. We've worked it out with QuickTrip folks and the state folks and, as you know, the, the state's uh pretty particular in some of their access locations, so we've worked that through with them. Um, and then ultimately, um, this has been approved at the state level. Our final construction plans are at the state currently for review, so we're going to be wrapping those up here in the next month. So, um, that's more of a FYI that that's uh happening, I guess. Um, that moves us into the second item there, or kind of lump them all together there. Uh, we do have some right of way certificates, a waiver of compensation donation letter, um, that we'll be looking to send them in dot along with the formal resolution dedicating the right of way that's needed. So, um, talk about them all together, uh, the certificate of surveys. We have some property that we've been working on, uh, between Mr. Schuie, um, the other property in the southeast, and then the county. Uh, so those are the certificate of surveys that you see here. Um, so we own those in fee title, uh, through some previous agreements. Uh, so we're ultimately looking in the resolution to dedicate those properties or those areas of the properties for public right of way. Um, so that is the resolution that it'll ultimately, uh, right of way is needed for the project. And it's ultimately in the public's best interest to dedicate that right of way. Uh, because again, we need it as we kind of widen that intersection out, we're putting a roundabout in there, so we get kind of wider in every direction, so that's what that's accommodating. In addition to the Sixteenth Street to Sec extension, uh, we're going to extend it, as you can see in the geometric there, in like kind of the backside of the QuickTrip property that's proposed, uh, to open up that first phase. The trail will go through all the way, uh, with that next extension of Sixteenth Street to kind of go on the cell side of the transfer station, that'll come at a later time. Uh, past the applications, we've chased some funding for that section, I think we could likely see some of those applications in the future because we have all the costs. So it's kind of simple to resubmit it and it could be a good project. Um, and then when we get this roundabout built, know what the costs are, we'll, we'll kind of reevaluate where state aid funds are on extending that. Um, and then talking about how that works with funding or, or state aid dollars that are still left, so. Um, and then lastly is the waiver of compensation. Uh, this is a donation letter that MinDOT has, it's generally for private parties. Um, that ultimately says, um, in this case, the city's aware that MinDOT needs the right of way, we're leading the project, but we're also we kind of, we've secured some right of ways, we're going to ultimately donate that, ultimately to MinDOT for a portion of it because some of the legs going east and west on Sixteenth Street. Um, MinDOT's interested in having that as MinDOT right of, which is pretty standard. So, um, that ultimately, uh, is a waiver of compensation I wanted to give before the council, so MinDOT doesn't have any hiccups, knock on wood, on how they kind of procure that right of way, because it's a kind of a particular sort of process. So, um, with that, I'll pause and answer any questions and ask that you entertain uh the resolution and the waiver of compensation.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon on that?
Timeline, I know Excel's out there marketing for polls and doing their underground stuff and.
They are, so two items with that, we have the Excel easement, the next item to talk about that, so we can finalize that. Uh, but big picture on our roundabout, starting in the spring and the completion date of July one, because that's the other project's completion date of July one. So we're going to redo tour for the other projects, we want to get right in there and get this work done on the same timeline, so.
So that's going to be closed, that Sixteenth Street intersection during the school year?
Yep, the same time as fifty-seven's closed.
Rip the Band-Aid off and just do it all at once.
Okay. Thank you.
There will be access to the, to the northwest corner of the high school there, so coming in from the north, you'll have access. And then same thing, uh, coming in from Sixteenth Street, coming westbound into town. You'll be able to get into the high school, and we've talked to the school, their western entrance there exiting. We've preserved that as part of the project, that was one of their concerns, but we are ultimately reconstructing it. So we've talked to the school about how their layouts and traffic is going to work in there. So July one, it's not quite, but we're, we're working on it.
So July one, we should have all that done. That's the plan.
And what, we'll see how spring, see how spring starts, so.
Thank you.
Um, there is some concern, I mean, it's a lot of, kind of a lot of work to get by July one, including the other project too, so that's been a discussion. You know, on how quickly does load restrictions come off in the spring, because that ultimately holds our contractor up. Is it rainy in the spring? You know, this past spring was a little touching, gold fall was great, but you know, it's kind of weather dependent ultimately, so.
And the state will have the plan to approve?
Yeah, we should. Uh, we've had some struggles, it's a new program in MinDOT, but it's, our, their signs sealed and delivered up to central office and um, they will have some comments, but all things we worked through, I think we've got most of them dialed in, but it's a process with them, so.
Okay, alright. Any other questions for Brandon?
Alright, I'll entertain, you need a motion on the waiver of compensation, correct?
Um, sure.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve the waiver of compensation, the donation letter to MinDOT for the right of way.
Make a motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then there's a resolution dedicating the right of way for trunk Highway fifty-seven and Sixteenth Street intersection improvements. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Thanks Mel.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thanks Brandon.
Alright, last item, um, Excel easements, um, Tim has pulled up their modification of easement. Um, so as we've talked and approved, uh, ultimately relocation costs for MinDOT to relocate their transmission lines. Uh, because they are in easement east and west, kind of both sides of fifty-seven through their corridor there. So we ultimately asked them as part of our project, or MinDOT's project, to relocate, um, due to our, our street projects. So they have certain land rights on both sides of the highway. Um, so they ultimately asked us to pay for the relocation and in turn, ultimately to modify their easement so they can uh still be in an easement after the project's done. Um, so we talked to MinDOT, MinDOT was fine with that because ultimately it's our project and they have certain rights uh, um, over the area. So they have asked us to approve this, so staff has reviewed it and we're good with it and recommending the council also approve it.
Okay. Any questions? Something we have to do, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the modification of the Excel easement, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Be nice to get that done.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
I think that's it today. We'll see you next week.
Alright. On to personnel, uh, recommendation from the fire chief to hire Corey Shillo as a probationary firefighter.
Make that motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second? Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You guys want him? Okay. Good, good. Alright, good. Alright, no, and thanks to Corey for stepping up and volunteering to do that too, so that's, we, we need a few more, so it's good he's doing that. Um, nothing from our attorney tonight, uh, correspondence, any questions on correspondence? Okay, we'll wrap up here. I see Nancy didn't waste any time after her presentation, she, she is, she is retired.
She asked me to move it up tonight. I was like, alright Nancy, once we can move it up, so you can get out of here.
She is retired.
Yeah.
Um, good for her. And reminder that our next meeting is not in two weeks, it's next Wednesday. So that'll be our last meeting of the year, barring any special meetings. Um, so next Wednesday at six o'clock. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for coming, guys.